Good evening, welcome to the county council regular meeting, May 22nd, 2014. Roll call please.
Governor present.
Attorney President Sullivan present.
Lieutenant Attorney present.
We have established a forum, please stand with the congregation. Please.
Let us call to mind that we're in God's presence. Eternal God, you are a loving Father and a gentle Mother. Hold us in the arms of your forgiveness and grace. When we run from you or abandon your guiding light, welcome us back with mercy. When we squander your gifts or reject your generosity, love us into right living. When we hide from our shame or mask our guilt, coax us into the light of your abundance. Here are our prayers. Guide this council with justice and concern, bless our town and our citizens, and may our town be a place of hope and joy. We ask this to your honor and glory. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to the public comments, we have a little change. I'd like to introduce Mr. John Burgess for our county council member who is very excited to give us an update on the Krabby Blues Festival.
I'm also selling things too. Put that right there as a gift. Somewhere. He's a lawyer. He breaks into the law. All right. Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for inviting me to speak about the Krabby Blues Festival. And let me admit, I'm not here to ask for, I'm not here to ask for money. Aren't you glad to hear that? Sorry about that. Appreciate it. For those of you that weren't here, most of you probably were, on Friday the 16th, when it was pouring down with rain, I was having real palpitations about whether I have a Krabby Blues this year. But the Lord smiled on us, we had the best weather we'd ever had, and Friday was like hell. I hadn't seen any horns up in here. Also, if you're not familiar with the background of the Krabby Blues, this was kind of an idea of Jenny Weber Potts, and she was the mother and guru of this project, and she left town, so that was what we planned. We have recruited a lot of people to help out. From my own staff, we have Lady Debbie Mountain, who did women's work, Holly Hubbard, who did a lot of work too, and Holly, that's the leader, had a couple of projects that succeeded. I've heard nothing but good comments about it, and I'm, you know, the happiest I could be. I mean, we didn't make much money, we'd like to make a bit, but that's the mindset of mine. I want you to know, we're really happy with it, we want to do it again next year, with the people we did, tried to do their job. The vendors, I heard good comments about the food vendors, nobody complained about anything being bad, or a lot of love of it. From the artists and the businesses, I haven't talked to them, I haven't talked to Jeb, but the ones I have talked to did well, wanted to come back, which is always a good sign. We already have a new food vendor that's signed up for next year, and all the food vendors that they're issuing want to come back, which is another thing. Three weeks ago, we were struggling to find our last food vendor, we got the Jeep knee truck, which might be a big hit, it was an Asian, for the peanut. Rotary, Krabby Thex, big hit, made $1,500. You only get $500 for a Polio Plus, which is the worldwide hit, their manager does through Polio. The St. Charles Catholic Church, that I understand, paid nearly $900 on their bake sale items. Yeah? Citizens of Central Park, I said, made nearly $2,000 of American sales. And we got $100 into the, the other side, for great, great experience. The crowd, we had the most difficulty, and I'm not good at this, maybe I should get somebody to produce. I think we have about the same crowd as last year, we've been told that we might have as much as a thousand, but I don't think we did. Best we can figure, we get probably something close to 900. Okay? We had a different mix this year, we have a lot more kids, I think everybody's count, probably a higher proportion of kids, which also affected our income, because they pay a cheaper price, or they're even cheaper than us, pretty good. So, that's one of the reasons we didn't make quite as much money, if we might have liked to, but that isn't our whole goal here, to do that, we want this to be a good community event, and I think we did all that, and we've had a lot of good feedback about it, so we're not worried about how many people showed up, it was busy enough, they could use a lot of people, we had lots of people. We couldn't have done this without our volunteers, which is our directors, and their spouses, and our staff, and their spouses, and parents and kids at school, and we had kids, also Rotary has an interact club, now Broadwater Chartered, and they send some kids down to help out, and we had lots more people. Something we did different this year than we've ever done before, we really concentrated on sponsors. And we had, in kind sponsors, 31 sponsors. We had three sponsors give us over $1,000, $1,000. One of them was Citizens of Central Park, we'll talk about that in a minute. We had seven sponsors who gave us $500. And those are people that sponsored, I don't know how many people were there, if you didn't see what the Loom got, the Loom got was a really big hit, that was one of the things he got sponsored for. We got sponsored with the t-shirts, lots of things like that, for the tickets, for the main. We had nine people gave $250 to businesses, and we had seven others gave $100. So, we get $10,500 in sponsorships this year, we had $3,500 last year. We had $2,500 in in-kind sponsorships, and that includes, that's things that we don't have to pay for, and we understand. The Bridge Network, which is a local Baptist church, Bridge Eastern Shore, Hampton Roads area, gave us two platables. Fixing B&amp;B did a lot of promotion, they did Facebook, they did a website, a lot of sorts of things. The Northampton County Sheriff's Department put up, took down the fence, which is a small thing. Bike and riding stable provided for animals, a little train around the park, and the town of Cape Charles, did a lot of things, we'll talk about that in a little more detail too. Within the town, Heather, and Jeb, and Jen, and Dave, were all extremely cooperative. The one that really stood out, that surprised us, Pete. Pete is just special, I mean, he did more than anybody could ask him to do. So, and we recognize him for that, I want to make sure, not to discourage anybody else that all helped him, but Pete was the main guy that was contributing to everything, he was there, helping the whole lot. So, if we didn't make more money than we, more money than we might have wanted to, what do we do with Pete? If you're not aware of this, we spent $4,417 to upgrade the electric service in Central Park. We paid for it, which is school paid for it. We got $1,000 sponsorship, since it's a central park, we helped pay for it, but they were very much involved in doing it. And what we did was, we extended an electric line, and a new strawberry, all the way to Peach Street, where to plug in there, so now you're actually plugging things and vehicles right there at Peach Street, and we ran it under the sidewalk, and it was plugged on the inside of the circus, and then out plugged in, things like the playground, which we did seven of this year, including the function of that, so the electric service. We also ran a cord from the meter of about tennis courts, under the sidewalk, and out plugged in there. So, now the park is much more functional for the long term, not just for us, but everybody uses it. We use it every day. We like it as part of our school, as part of the fabric of our school, for the fabric of town. We were hoping to get this done cheaper, but it just cost what it cost to hand. The people that did it, Tim Smith, who was underground electric utilities, does work for town, checking electric, they did it quickly, they did it well, and they did it, I think, the day before, a few months. So, we're a little worried about it, they didn't do it, but they got it done. So, it's there, it's there, everybody used. We also bought a heavy cord, the kind of cords you guys plug in, like a marine cord, so you can especially play an extension cord in these, these new outlets on the inside of the park, that's at the marine club, and you get a pedestal, but I think Pete comes to the mayor, someone like that, it's on a long road, I think. Was it maybe?
No, it was an old pedestal that came off the, I forgot that.
So, they can actually wheel that and get, get blessed every place. Because this, if you're going to have festivals, and we think this is a great place to have a festival, this is one of those infrastructure things that needs to happen. And we saw it need, we talked to the town, the idea evolved, all the people, a bunch of all that, Dave's involved in that, and Steve was finally jealous, and still did it. And we're happy with it, we're happy with it. We are going to have Krabby Blues Festival next year, on May 16th, that's the town, we're just about to go meet the Christmas school. So, we'll, we're hopeful next year to get more sponsors, and to get more fair awards. We probably never would have seen done about $2,500, which is not a lot for all to give, but we spent $2,500 on town assets, and so we knew that going in, that I'm worried about it, I'm happy about that. The vibe that I felt that day, and I remember that, was it was family friendly, it was relaxed, it was laid back, and it was open to people coming in, having a good time, there was lots to do, so we know now that what we put there for them to like, we will replicate that next year, and say we'll have at least one more Krabby Blues Festival. Also, these t-shirts, they were spent over $10 a piece. I was asked by the Fisher School Board if I would bring everyone to the council here, I wanted to say no, I'm going to ask them all. So, if it doesn't work, maybe I will give you, but tonight, they're on sale for $10. I'm not sure who the name is on this one right here, but somebody promised. Actually, Steve, one right there. Last but not least, we just finished, as I mentioned, the school has agreed to move forward a $300,000 capital plan, and want to finish the sanctuary in our school, we want to renovate it completely, condition it, we want to redo the steps outside, Jeff knows a lot about this, he wants to bet, he says, he thinks it'll work out. But we're going to move forward with that. We also got signs made, so this one goes to the town, and you can keep that and use it for whatever you want to do with it for long. And some dummy, which probably me, forgot to get one, and you'll notice the difference in the size of the signs, it's all about dimensions, and so this one goes to Central Park, and they can use this on any of their events, and which we're hopeful, with all the people that sponsored this, we're going to come back and they'll sign back, we're looking at it next year. We already have, in addition to new food vendor, we have an offer to sponsor all the music, we're raising any, so it creates a lot of positive feedback. You know, I haven't explained, how can we get all that work for that $2,500, just to get back? And there's some back there probably who want to hurt money. We did a lot of other things that built in our own situation, things that we needed to build the school, that give us, like a little thing, we bought three nice pools, but we don't have, you know, we don't have a costume. We're just at this point, how we can start to do things that build our little capital assets, but if we're able to get the financing we wanted, we'd have $300,000 to leave, and we're going to turn it down to $100,000. So, if you would like to be part of that program, you have a chance to do that in the future. What will be announced, we have invited the school lately, just take a notice that the windows are covered with a plexiglass that the skewers have used, the stained glass windows. We're going to take all that off, put glass on, like you see in churches and sheriffs and other places, so it's going to knock your eyes out if you see it, it's spectacular. That's part of the project, the interior is part of the project, and we're going to do a windows fundraiser, and we're giving the opportunity to dedicate a window to a family member, to Heather, for a few thousand dollars. But that's what we're going to raise, the $200,000, and we can pay back all the construction costs, and hopefully, in the future. Anyway, so it's all good. Thank you. All right. Any questions? Mr. Bennett, do you have anything to say about that? I didn't ask you very much. Let me, I'm going to give you this t-shirt, because it was a, that's my personal hanger.
All right, this time, our public comment, three minutes, moving up in China.
Hi, there's one by my heart. Excuse me? I said, I know who I'm by in my heart before. Okay, awesome, all right. My name is Donna Onlykoller, if you don't already know that by now, 711 Tassell Avenue. I'm here this evening as a representative of the Cape Charles Business Association to give the council an update on the Love Project that we presented at the last council meeting. We held our Love Train fundraiser on Saturday, May 3rd, with about 65 participants dancing their way down Mason Avenue, all thanks to Mayor Sullivan's idea. Six restaurants also offered drink and food specials that day with a love theme, and we raised just under $1,400 from all of those activities. We currently have love donation buckets at businesses throughout town, as well as a window display in the 200 block of Mason Avenue, to continue to promote the program and solicit more donations. Our next fundraiser is called Love Letters, thanks to an idea from Jen Lewis, which will be a temporary art installation at the Point from June 13th through July 4th. Love Letters will be made up of 12-inch red hearts that we're selling for $35, with a custom handwritten message of love on them. Order forms are over there on the table, if anyone would like to take one. Orders are being taken over the next two weeks. Pete?
I have to second exactly what John said. Pete has this vision for a temporary love installation with all these hearts, and he's going to build it for us, so we're taking orders through June 6th, and then from June 13th through July 4th, those hearts will be up there. We've also applied for a grant from the Virginia Tourism Corporation, and received word yesterday that they're very excited about our installation, and will let us know in the coming weeks about how much money will be awarded. Total construction costs are going to be about $5,000, and we have been able to begin the construction, we actually have the L and the E already made, thanks to an offer from a local business person who is loaning us the funds to get the construction done, and then we will pay that person back from our fundraising. Love will debut in the Fourth of July parade, parade this year, and we're planning a ribbon cutting ceremony for Wednesday, July 9th, at the Point, and we invite council, town employees, and all the area residents to come, and help welcome Love to Cape Charles.
Beaendeval.
My name is Beaendeval. Council, town manager, mayor, I'm here to talk about the high water bill, bills that we have. And I think the council should have a discussion on this. I'm giving it two, three, four times. We've got to find a way to bring the water bill down. $108 minimum without using a drop is very high. Come summertime, the normal average bill could be $120, $130, depending on how many showers you take. Now, and the thing is, I would like for the council to examine me and discuss where, how can we bring the water bill down? Now, my thought is, I know sometimes we have extra money to spend, $10,000 that we did a few months ago, to do a study on a work issue. Also, my thought is, why don't we have a hiring freeze? Save the money right there. Do we need another maintenance worker? How many do we have now?
Anybody ask me?
How many we have now?
Ten, four.
How many maintenance services do we have now?
We have four public works, for the whole town.
Okay. I did see the advertisement.
Because one resigned.
One resigned, okay. Also, also for the governor is that we want to hire a full-time assistant town manager. Is our town really so big that we need two town managers? I mean, it's like a thousand population here. So, what I'd like the council to do is discuss somehow to bring the water bill down, and also maybe a hiring freeze. Right? Thank you.
At this time, we need approval of the agenda format. I think there's going to change, correct? Can we believe something?
It's stretched.
Thank you, so we have a motion to accept the agenda format? Hearing no objections, so moved by unanimous consent, approval please for the minutes. All right, several. Hearing no objections, so moved by unanimous consent. Department, department report, treasurer's report, is a action item. Good evening. Pete, you were here, you brought him up?
Yes.
Page one, cash on hand, total cash on hand as of end of April. These figures are as of April 31st, otherwise stated. Total cash on hand is $1,7195. This is an overall decrease of $119,515 from March, and that's primarily due to capital project payments of $132,000. The total restricted or reserved cash is $355,001. The funds reserved from the library CD are now unreserved, and LGIP will develop utilities cash, and account number one has been unrestricted, so those have been moved to the general unrestricted. Total cash in all accounts as of April 30th was $1,426,598. The bottom section of page one shows a tax collection comparison for fiscal year 2014 versus 2013, and it's based on year-to-date totals. Overall, again, this month, there's a 5% increase in tax collections over 2013. Business licenses are up 130%, which is 37 and a half thousand increase over last year. All car decals are down, a little by $962, which is a 29% decrease, that's 30 decals, and I think that maybe it's because we have late spring, we haven't gotten out there yet. License tax shows a 77% increase of $7.9,000. Machinery and tools tax is down 13% of $4,000 over last year, and we're looking, checking the records to make sure the people that paid last year, paid this year. Meal tax shows a 22% increase of $36.7,000. Penalties and interest on all property taxes increased by 25% of $7,000. A collection of prior year real estate and personal property taxes increased by 32% of $15,280. And the last, over 10% variance is a transient occupancy tax shows a $7,000 or 18% increase. Page two shows the net activity, financial activity year-to-date. You can see the budget also, and the prior year-to-date. The general fund shows year-to-date revenue of $2.078 million, and year-to-date expenses at $1.739 million, for a net balance of $339,000. Public utilities fund shows year-to-date revenue of $1.285 million, and year-to-date expenses at $1.234 million, for a net balance of $50.6,000. The harbor fund shows April year-to-date revenue of $686,000, and year-to-date expenses of $808,000, for a net balances of, balance of negative $195,000. But as of yesterday, the harbor has recouped $32.6,000, that's shortfall. And the busy season is just beginning. The sanitation fund shows year-to-date revenue of $144,000, and year-to-date expenses of $125,000, for a net balance of $19,000, which is attributable to timely releases. Page three for the capital projects. In April, the finance department dispersed $132,000 for capital projects. As of April 30th, year-to-date, we paid $55,000 on the multi-use trail project, $86.7,000 on the fishing pier repair project, $12,000 on the old library accessibility project, $13.8,000 on the sidewalk near Heritage Acres. We've spent $7,500 for water fund projects. $105,000 was carried over in the fiscal year of '14 for the wastewater treatment plant construction, wrapping up the project and paying final bills. $27.6,000 was paid for the backwash. The harbor skater was $12,000, and we've spent $7,500 on arenas and short floating slips. Page four. None of this is new, that I've added. It's a little bit quick. And I've got two columns, so on the left shows collections as of, real estate tax collections as of 4/30, and then as of the middle of the month. So, for 2013 real estate tax, the total real estate value is $409,929,500, I mean, $500, that's the assessment, assessed value. So, we've collected 90% of the total bill as of April 30th, and as of May 15th, we're at 92% of collected. For the personal property license, machinery, and tools taxes, we've collected 78% of the total bill, and 79% as of May 15th. For prior year, all property tax, interest, and penalty collections were at 150% of budget as of April 30th, and at 216% of budget as of May 15th. The town's total debt balance is $10.17 million, we're on a debt service schedule, and all payments are current for the schedule, all balances will be paid by 2034. Also, the 2013 financial audit is complete, and it will be reviewed with the council at the June 30th session. Any questions?
Thank you for adding the net on the revenue versus expenses. Thanks a lot. I just said that to Chris, and he said, why didn't you say, should we fix it? I could understand it.
He can come back in all you're talking.
And also, as part of the prior real estate tax, the night 15th of the year, election prior, doesn't clear the payment on the topic, if you see, I was talking about that, the taxes, they're trying to, they caught up. And also, 4/6.
It does or does not?
It does.
It does?
It does.
What was this talking?
We're down to about $11,000, two years, but it does, they, taxes, they're about, about 46.
Need a motion to accept the treasurer's report? Second. Hearing no objections, so moved by unanimous consent, thank you. County commissioner boards?
The only updates I've got, on the May 12th, there is a informational meeting at the county social services building regarding the flood insurance remat from FEMA. I was going there expecting kind of the presentation, the rundown, but it was more of just a long sit-down, the property and their security, how they would individually be affected by the changes to the map. There has been another change with the effective date of the new firms. They were anticipating that the letter of final determination was going to come out this month, and that six months from now, it would go into effect. Now, I've been told that the letter of final determination will be sent out in September, and the effective date of the new map is in March of next year. Also, the Virginia Stormwater Management Act, the Northampton County has decided to opt out of that. DCR has changed up the requirements a number of times since they initially passed it, and now localities that have meet certain criteria can opt out of it, and they can have DEQ do their stormwater management plan reviews and inspections, pretty much handle the program. So, the county, who we were planning to fall under, is out the out, DEQ will be handling it. I've been told by their planning department that Melissa Cowan will be sending out the letter to all towns to let us know, you know, how exactly that affects us, and what we have to do to follow under DEQ also. I don't think we have the personnel or the time to try to implement our own Stormwater Management Act. It's a pretty involved process, and at this point, like I said, DEQ's changed the requirements about three times in the past year, so from what I've seen, a lot of localities that have that option are opting out, at least for the time being, until DEQ can figure out once and for all what, what the plan is for it. So, once I get that letter in from, from Northampton County, we can follow that process and get that submitted to the state. I think that's, that's all we got.
Rob, have you gotten any more survey feedback?
I think we've gotten about five or six recently. Yeah, there's still some.
Okay, so do we, when will the survey be taken down?
The end of this month.
The end of the month, so people know that they can, they can go online to the town website, and they can complete?
Yeah, we noticed was put in the last utility bills. Yeah, we noticed was put in the last utility bills, and I think there's also hard copies available, and if somebody doesn't have internet access and wants to fill it out, just return it to our office.
So last day, May 31st. Okay. If you haven't, you may want to consider doing that. We'd like your input, we being the planning commission.
Right, and once we, once we get it all in, we'll be analyzing it and reporting back to the planning commission before we schedule any kind of public hearings or anything. We'll also bring the information to town council, so everybody can have a good, a good gauge of what the actual public interest is in something like this.
Thank you. Any other additions to your department report?
I have a, I think there's a very, I guess.
Yeah. I just wanted to let y'all know that the pier will be open on, well, it'll be open tomorrow. And in order to keep the construction people and the fishing people separate, which I think is probably a good idea for safety reasons, we're going to have people enter, just have to walk down the beach at the gazebo and walk down the beach to get on the pier, because there's just no way for them to walk through the area that they would normally, you know, go to get down there. I mean, it might, it may work this weekend, where, you know, maybe we can set it up where they can walk through there this weekend, but long-term, I mean, this is going to be going on for probably two or three weeks, and we would like to leave the pier open the whole time, even while we're finishing up the landward portion of the pier, you know, just leave it open so that they can come and go. And the only way that's going to happen is for them to go down the beach. There would be no lights, so, I mean, I don't know if that means we close it at night, or, you know, we just let them fish out there in the dark, or bring flashlights, or lanterns, or whatever they want to do. I mean, that's, you know.
Have you weighed it out, is it worth it to do it? Do you think, is it worth it to open it partially with no?
Yeah, everything's set, I mean, with the air fix and?
People are, people are ready to get out there and go fishing.
Why don't they are, I'm just asking you.
Well, sure, I, I think so, sure. And I guess it would just be if there are going to be any ground rules that we want to set.
Come on, and we, we talked about it earlier too, to, and Pete was, we were talking about whether we wanted to just go ahead and close it, and we're going to put signage up saying where to access, and it'd be opened up to dawn, dust to dawn from the dawn's dusk during this trans, during, you know, while the pier was being finished without, and letting, or at least electricity being up. But I guess it's safe, there's no electricity.
Yeah, yeah, it's great, yeah, it's great. New pier is awesome, and, yeah, I mean, we had, I had Jim Chapman down there today, and just like, you know, it's a, it'd be an overrun of line out there just to, you know, to energize the lighting that's out there. I mean, you're talking about five hundred feet of copper, and so you're probably talking about five hundred to a thousand dollars, you know, in order to do that, and it's probably just not worth it. He said if he had a piece that long, he would loan it to us, but he just doesn't, so we just figured, well, we'll just go with that lights. So anyway, here's that.
I think a, a dawn that does copper any time would be sufficient.
I agree. So did the police enforce that?
Yes, they will. We, we talked about it.
Okay, okay.
And signage, is everything?
Yeah, and, you know, Pete's working on some signs.
There's already one up there.
Yeah, I think there's some more to come, you know, we're trying to get it set up, and it's going to take all day tomorrow to get it, you know, worked out for, so we can just leave it for the weekend, but.
Yeah, and now that we've decided that dust, you know, dust dawn and the police.
Yeah, that's what the signs say, you know, because that's what we had intended, you know, well, that's what we were kind of planning on.
And they can enforce that. And then the sand replenishment, or, or load trucks, these trucks, it's getting a lot of today.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be four hundred truckloads plus sixty thou, six thousand cubic yards. So it's going to be the, it's going to be a lot more than we normally get, but it's going to be closer to five to six dollars a yard as opposed to twelve or thirteen dollars a yard that we normally, you know, pay for putting sand in place. So it's a great deal, and we wouldn't have it unless Bay Shore just pushed the issue to, and that's why it's going on as late as it is, because all this back and forth was going on, and it finally just came to, okay, we'll give you the sand, we'll load it on your trucks, just haul it over to the beach and dump it. And so at that point, we said, yeah, okay, that sounds like a deal, so we, we took that deal, and so, but it's taken all spring to get to that point. Sorry it's late, but totally, it's good sand. It's good sand, yeah.
Do you have any idea how long it will take? We're talking weeks or just?
No, I think probably, they'll probably be finished hauling, I'm thinking Wednesday of next week. I think they're going to haul, they're not going to haul over the weekend, but they will start back up on Monday, and that portion of the beach will just be closed.
Tuesday.
Except for the most daring.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions to raise on capital projects?
Just want to give everybody an update on construction this month. Issued eighteen permits to the tune of about twenty-four hundred dollars. It's not a lot of money. It's quite a bit of permits, but it's a lot of small stuff. I've done forty-five inspections though, up to this point, this month, and I know one contractor who has already contract signed for four new homes, and another contractor, two, two more possibly within the next three months. So, and Haas Inc., which is a subcontractor of Echelon Resources, has pulled a interior demo slash structural stabilization permit for the old school, and they hope to mobilize within the month. So.
Later than the month, I hope.
Yeah, later than the month, and they're looking at like March or April timeframe.
Depending on weather.
Well, yeah, of course, weather dependent, you might as well always put at least a month to a month and a half for the weather in the winter around here.
I think they're optimistic.
The most impressive thing in town is the house up on the road by the mayor, a little square.
The second floor.
A half-house is now, has everybody seen it?
What's?
A half-house has become a three-story.
But I was told that that was a two-story house at the time, it caught fire, and they just tore it off and just weathered it in and made it a one-story.
Now it's going to be a three-story.
It's just going to be huge.
Yeah, it's going to get back in the historic scheme of things now, with an eight-frame, so.
Very good, Jim. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. I also want to thank the fire department and the police department.
I mean, I was going to talk about that in a minute, but yeah. No, that's fine. We had a, an incident in town on Wednesday. Some people were cooking on their stove, and the grease fire got away from them, and the, we had a rooming contents fire, and they got out, got their first dog out, and one of the dogs, he couldn't find, he actually attempted to go back in, which I'm glad he came back out pretty quickly. First, first two guys in found the dog and brought it right out, and they didn't even care about anything else after that happened, but we were able to save the house. I talked to him today, and they got ServPro coming, and they think within two months they'll have him back in the house, so.
What you failed to mention is because of the quick response.
Oh, that's, that's a no-brainer for me, but.
Right, because of the quick response, the president or head of the insurance company said you saved the, um, you saved a hundred thousand.
I would say, I would say another.
Hundred thousand.
Yeah, another five minutes, it would have been a, an exterior surrounded ground.
From the outside, you don't see it, but the inside, they left everything on the one floor.
Um, yeah, to an extent, they, you know, a lot of had smoke damage, not, not a lot of fire damage, but some just smoke damage.
No, 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 smoke. Probably it's hard to restore that.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, they, they had a huge painting in there that was, I think, pretty much unharmed, so.
No plumbing leaks?
No.
Well, now, he was extremely impressed with the Cape Charles Fire Company.
Yeah.
I want to mention, he took, I, I talked to him today, and he said, I unfortunately had to find out the hard way how excellent our fire department is.
Yeah, and the, believe it or not, the chief of the fire company actually had to go interior because him and, there was only one other guy on the truck, and you can't go in, you know, we don't ever let anybody go in by theirself. He was actually the one who found the dog, so.
We know.
He said, he said, who's that guy? I said, that's the chief. And he went up there and gave him this big hug.
He, he was mildly impressed.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a few things to add. I want to make sure that everyone received and saw the notice on the public input meeting for the art walk. That will be on June 3rd at the Palace Theater. There is flyers on the table. The purpose of the meeting is to obtain input on the overall concept of the art walk and areas that will be emphasized, priorities for the project, and there will be a presentation by a consultant that we've been working with, as well as the committee, on the art walk. That's on June 3rd. The only other thing, a few things I wanted to add as an update. The acquisition for property, purchasing the seven lots from Mr. Foster is under contract and will close tomorrow. We executed today, will close tomorrow. The conditions were met, that council had directed through the resolution to purchase the property, and the taxes that were collected, the liquid taxes collected as a result of the purchase was a hundred and four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-eight cents, and the purchase price for seven lots coming into town in Fayetteville Randolph is a hundred thousand. So we were able to.
Total, not each?
Total, total, a hundred thousand. And so the conditions were met, and we'll move forward.
So we got seven lots and four thousand dollars.
Yes.
Cash flow basis.
Cash, yeah. Either we got, we got seven lots for a hundred thousand, or we got a hundred and four thousand. Hundred and four thousand, back to the end.
Taxes, so.
We've done that a little quicker.
Yes. Thank you, Joan. That was great.
I think everyone else had mentioned something. Admin software was in the town hall with the finance department last week for three days, and we had a great training session. My new treasury dev, dev looked really wonderful. The finance department is really doing a great job, and they really benefited from the training. So that, that was a great thing. Other than that, I think we talked about everything else I had on my list. Does anyone have any other questions? The wage compensation study, we've gone through the surveys on employees, we've had one site visit, and we're waiting for the final date on the next site visit. We'll have a couple of site visits, and they'll go around to each operation, and new operations and how different, how the harbor works, how the wastewater works, and there's a lot of report in the next month or two at the latest.
Now, old business, Cape Charles Community Trail, on phase two update.
I was on vacation, so this is my first one, and this is an update from the last time we brought forth an update. We did receive an updated project cost estimate that was increased by ninety thousand. Our last estimate by consultants was one point four, four hundred and eighty, and the newest cost estimate before we go out to bid is one million five hundred and seventy, so it was an increase of cost estimate of nine thousand. This is, we have updated our budget to reflect, reflect the increase. The town match of twenty percent was increased from two, two, two hundred and ninety-six thousand to three hundred and ten thousand. The match is being financed through PNC, like financing schedule that is currently in our proposed budget as well. And we're looking to go out, hopefully go out to bid as soon as we get the final approval from VDA, to go out to bid in June, July, and when we receive the final. We're working on construction plans, construction timeline for completion over the next couple months.
Information, huh? The next item under old business is to schedule a public hearing for fiscal year 2014 proposed budget.
I don't have that much, actually. Is that the new information that was on the table? I think Deb and I are going to review this together. Over the last couple of months, we have had several work, work sessions to review the budget by fund, we reviewed the water and wastewater budgets and harbor and sanitation, and I think there's extra copies if anyone else did not get one. And so we are ready to set the public hearing as of our last meeting on May 1st. You'll see the proposed fiscal year 2014, 2015 budget is a total of seven million two hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and twenty-three. This includes two thousand four hundred and seventy, two thousand one hundred and thirty-eight for capital projects, and attached is a summary of the capital projects, and I'll go through the capital projects by fund. We have, in the general fund, we have a new dump truck that is replacement for two old dump trucks that will go out of service for thirty thousand. We also have the Cape Charles Multi-Use Trail Phase Two, which is a significant, is primarily the total capital budget of one point five seven, five hundred and seventy thousand, and that is the total budget. Our match, as I said earlier, is twenty percent. Eighty percent will be funded through our enhancement program. The next item is the library building, new HVAC, the second floor, heating and air for the second floor. Right now, the second floor does not have heating and air, and it needs to be upgraded to have that capacity. Furniture and equipment for the Cape Charles, our new meeting civic center location, that's at eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-five. That does include furniture and audio equipment. And I haven't done this new thing for the equipment. We also have to upgrade a new phone system for the municipal phone, for the municipal building at eleven thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars. Currently, we have a, a phone system that is not serviced anymore, and I think it was twenty-plus years old, so we're going to upgrade the phone system. I also have included in here, if, if the replacement police vehicle is approved, that is included in here as a capital project. We've researched and done several seminars on shore scan products, that's electronic record retention capabilities for eight thousand two hundred, and then we also have ten thousand in, in budget to evaluate, design, and have construction plans for the public parking behind the library, the two lots, to look at that site and be able to, to get it ready to be put out to bid would be the next step. The water fund, we have the continuation of the Keck Wells engineering and connection to the water plant that is financed through current line proceeds. Automatic flush, we have two in here budgeted, one, both at five thousand each, and we also have a percentage of a truck, replacement truck for the, that will be shared for the water and wastewater department. That's replacement of a two thousand and trucker. The sewer fund also has a percentage of a truck and continuation of the pump station redesign, engineering improvements to the pond and plum, plum tree collection systems, and we also have manholes, a hundred thousand manhole improvements, and they are being financed through. And they are being financed through our current PNC loan financing that's a priority project. The harbor fund, we do have budgeted the breakwater segment, five hundred thousand, and we also have an inshore wave attenuator. Five hundred and seventy-five thousand for the harbor fund is actually the funding that we received from the Virginia Corps Authority funding. And we're asking for a carryover of five hundred and seventy-five thousand. We will attend a meeting on Tuesday at eleven o'clock in Norfolk at, to hear if the request will be honored. And it's, it's in our budget for next year. And that's the capital projects. I think the significant things for the general fund to, and we will go over at the public hearing as well, is the increase in local revenue, local taxes of meals, as you've seen the treasurer's report, transit occupancy tax. And B-Pole is continuing on the rise. We will increase our transit occupancy tax effective January 1st from three percent to three point seven percent. And the council has designated the transit occupancy tax revenue collected to tourism initiative, initiatives. And we will be funding, in that, in that request is website, funding for our Cape Charles By the Bay website, as well as the museum and the art center and tall ships, birding festival and fireworks that are coming here. We, let's see, general fund. We also did increase our fire department contribution this year from eighteen thousand, six to twenty-five thousand. I think that is pretty much, we have a two, we've also included two percent cost of living for all employees. There are no, there's not an increase in employees except for a part-time harbor position that has been working at thirty-two hours.
In the morning, thirty-six.
Thirty-two, thirty-six hours. And that position has been made to full-time and that's included. Also, the utility rates, we spent several work sessions discussing reviewing the utility rates and the trash collection fee, which is contracted with David's disposal, will increase to thirteen fifty. The water rate will decrease from thirty-four fifty to thirty-one fifteen. That's primarily the refinancing of the water and wastewater loans that we did at the same time as turning in some new money for capital projects into the same refinancing mechanism. And the significant part, one point five million, was the water tower we refinanced. So we saved some money by refinancing the loan through that process. The wastewater, wastewater rate will increase from sixty dollars and eighty-five cents to sixty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. However, the overall utility rate to the consumer will remain unchanged for the coming year. So it will remain at one hundred and seven dollars and ninety-two cents. And primarily, the increase in the wastewater rate was the new money and also, the new money that we took out was for infrastructure for the wastewater side. A million primarily was all utilities. And the keck wells is, it was one of the projects, but the majority of the projects that were financed were wastewater. And we're going to set a public hearing. Also, comparing the general fund to last year, the significant change of the increase, as you will see, is capital. The capital project, which is mainly the trail project, we did have an increase in legislative because of capital. We've had a decrease in the police department budget from last year. And the town manager's budget does, town manager's budget has all the debt service for the general fund. Also includes the transit, tourism-related initiatives in that budget. And it does include, at this time, the last time we reported to council, the last meeting, we had a contingency of a hundred and ten thousand dollars in a reserve for a contingency fund in town manager's budget. In years past, we had, we have been able to do that for emergencies or if revenue does not come in as projected. And this year, we were able to, to be able to have a contingency, say rainy day fund, that is approved by the council out of that budget, out of the town manager's budget. And that actually has increased due to the VRS changes that you will see later on as we move forward. And that increase is to a hundred and twenty thousand. So it went up ten thousand. And the, the budget, the public hearing will be on June 12th to hear comments. And also, the entire budget will be posted on the website and deliver all the different pieces that we have in the budget. And if, if anyone would like to see all the different budget meetings that we've been through and all the, the total budget, please just let us know, let us know, let us know from the treasurer and we'll be happy to.
So this is an action item and we have the date set. We have a motion to set a public hearing, June 12th, 2014.
Second.
Can we amend the time? Six PM? It doesn't say it.
Yes. June 12th, 2014 at six PM.
And then we will vote on the budget at the regular scheduled meeting, June.
Right. So we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any objections? So moved by unanimous consent. Next item, also an action item, county zoning ordinance resolution.
All right. At the May 8th work session, we discussed a possible resolution to submit to Northampton County regarding the decisions on their revised zoning ordinance. I took the recommendations that we had for the draft that was presented to you that night and incorporated into it, which related to the historic town entrance overlay district that we submitted to the county, but has not been reviewed yet, as far as I know. During the discussion, it came up that a second resolution might be needed dealing with the continuation of the planning commission's involvement in special use permit process. The proposed zoning ordinance right now would have their special use permits go directly from staff to their board supervisors, cutting out the planning commission. Where the planning commission is heavily involved in development decisions and all for the county, I think we all feel that it's a good idea for them to still have the recommendations for the board supervisors. It was discussed at the, at the work session, also talking about keeping the current town edge zoning in place. I did not include that in either of the resolutions mainly because the, the historic town entrance overlay that we are supporting and trying to get adopted is written in reference to the proposed zoning ordinance. So if, you know, if we're supporting the town edge and also the historic town entrance, it's kind of, they go against each other a little bit. We'd have to, a lot of the byright uses that are allowed currently are going to remain byright uses and the proposed, as was shown in the tables that were presented at the work session. And if the, if the historic town entrance overlay does get adopted, then we've kind of got what we want from it. If it doesn't get adopted, then yes, I think we do want the town edge district to stay. But if they both go in, then we have to rewrite the town entrance overlay corridor. So that was the reason for that. There was also talk about the annexation agreement, the cooperation between the town and county during their review process for development. And I think that is a valid thing, a, a good resolution that we could submit to the county, but we didn't include it in either one of these resolutions because they, they're kind of separate issues. The, the annexation agreement spells out, you know, this process that's supposed to be followed, but it doesn't have anything to do with the zoning ordinance. So for these two, we figured since they're directed at the zoning ordinance, do these. And if you want to come back at a later date and support getting back to what the annexation agreement spells out, we can do that. But for these four, for zoning ordinance, we figured we'd just focus on the zoning ordinance, but...
And we'd like to have a work session and go over all the amendments and the annexation agreements between the town and county, the town and Bay Shore, the town and Brown and Root. I did find, Cila, who's here tonight, I did find her, her template from 1990 of what, what was to be done, what was not done. And I can certainly share that, you know, with, with council and send that out. What I found, you know, going through the annexation agreement in reference to what Rob is explaining, the reference to the one mile is between the, the town and Brown and Root. And so there was no, there was no agreement between the town and county as we were talking through at the work session, that there was some way that we could pull that into this resolution. However, it doesn't mean that, you know, as we move forward, that we're going to evaluate and, and see what we can do or what, depending on what happens with the zoning. The, the annexation agreement between the town and county did have planning, as we have, it's in the resolution, we explain how, what the purpose of that.
We'll just add on that, that mile that you just referenced. If they do, if the county were to adopt the historic town entrance overlay corridor, as we have it proposed, the map that's attached in the packet, the, the distance north and south of thirteen on that map is a mile each way. So even though that agreement is between the town and Brown and Root, if they adopt this, then this overlay corridor would go for a mile in either direction.
And that's the same map that you had, you had submitted to the county in January. We just, I think, I don't think we had included in the discussion in the last work session. So I don't think the map is there. Let me discuss that.
We need a motion to accept Resolution 20140522, supporting the inclusion of the historic town entrance overlay corridor in the proposed 2014 zoning amendments under consideration by the Northampton County Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
Second.
This is a roll call.
Point of order, please. Now we can have discussion.
I'd already talked to Libby about rewording the date because the board of supervisors have already met for the month of May. So that's been changed to the next scheduled meeting. But George pointed out to me in the so therefore be it resolved that the town of Cape Charles hereby petitions the Northampton County Board of Supervisors. What is written is to consider inclusion of the draft historic town entrance overlay quarter. And Eve was suggesting that we reworded to remove, consider it's inclusion of, and have it read, Northampton County Board of Supervisors to include the draft historic town entrance overlay quarter. I guess it's just a little bit more of a direct, point to the point. And I think, I'd like to see that change, come with that correction. Do we need to modify the motion? Then I, I will make the motion as amended.
So moved.
Thank you. Natali, yes?
Sullivan, yes.
Bannon, yes.
Lemon, yes.
So moved by unanimous consent. And now we have the second resolution. Resolution 20140522A, supporting the continuation of planning commission involved within the special use permit process in the proposed 2014 zoning amendments under consideration by the Northampton County Boards of Supervisors and forego reading. I'm not going to read directly.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
And we have, again, just a change to the date for the board of supervisors to be the next meeting. I've already talked to Libby about it.
Yeah, we're all, a lot of good work done in a short amount of time and we're well worded, so thank you very much.
Roll call vote. Natali, yes?
Sullivan, yes.
Bannon, yes.
Lemon, yes.
So moved by unanimous consent. Thank you, Rob. Now we go into new business, National Public Works Week Proclamation. The town of Cape Charles has yet another proclamation, 20140522, in honor of National Public Works Week. And we're going to forego reading. Public Works, Public Works Week. Mine says Public Works. The employees of Public Works. And this is a roll call vote. I'm in motion, second.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Natali, yes?
Sullivan, yes.
Bannon, yes.
Bannon, yes.
So moved unanimous consent. Building Safety Month Proclamation.
This is something that the International Code Council does every year. The International Code Council is the most widely used and adopted building safety, energy and fire prevention codes in the nation and are used by most US cities, counties and states. The modern building codes also include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters. Building Safety Month is sponsored by them to remind the public about the critical role of our local code officials to assure us of safe, efficient and livable buildings. Just a couple of statistics I pulled off of some of the stuff that they have for this month, for this year's Building Safety Month. In 2010, more than, there was more than 362,000 residential fires, which caused roughly 2,500 deaths and more than 13,000 injuries, 6.5 billion dollars in property damage. And what's, what a coincidence is, is we had a grease fire this week in town and the third leading cause of fire death for older adults is cooking fires. They were attentive, they had fire extinguishers, but sometimes you just can't control, you know, everything. And one other statistic, more than 2,500 Americans died in home fires last year and most of the cases, the home did not have a working smoke alarm. There's one thing I try to press to everybody is to have working smoke detectors on every floor and in every bedroom. It's the one thing that, that you can, that you can rely on if you do have a fire, so...
Thank you, Joan. This is an action item. We need a roll call vote, please.
Need a motion?
We don't. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dunne, yes.
One old Bannon, yes.
Sullivan, yes.
Natali, yes. So moved by unanimous consent. The next item is for information. Another.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right, that's right. USDA RD. Yes, this is for information, and we will bring back next month for action, a resolution if council would like to move forward. Last September 2013, the town council authorized the town manager to apply for grant funding through USDA Royal Development to purchase a new police car. At this time, at that time, we were looking to replace a 2008 Crown Vic with that application. And in the meantime, for the coming year, in the meantime, if you recall, the Crown Vic got into an accident, and we had to purchase a new vehicle. And at that time, we decided we had the funding in the police department with the difference in chiefs and savings that we had at the time to purchase a new vehicle. So we did purchase a replacement. However, we currently do, had planned in FY16 to continue on our two, five-year rotation of police cars. And recently, I got a letter of intent from Royal Development that as of that application from September 2013, we did receive a grant for $8,100 to go towards our next replacement vehicle. The loan, we would have to have a loan at $15,100. And that loan, the loan terms are for five years. However, there is no prepaid penalty. Council can choose to pay the car off in a year, two years, three years. And we have shown that the total interest within in five years is $1,920. The interest rate is a little bit higher than we've seen in the past at 4.125%. However, we have the next couple months to decide whether we want to move forward to purchase and let USDA know that we'd like to purchase. Our 2010 has had some repairs recently that is paid for. And what we would recommend if council wanted to, if we wanted to move forward, which Chief went home tonight and was, say, or otherwise to be here also speaking, is to move forward and purchase the new vehicle for the police department and take the 2010 that is still in good condition. It's not, I don't know how much longer it would be in good condition, and use it for administrative car. Right now, the town staff, when we have to go to meetings or training, we do take our own vehicles. And what we would do is sign that up, be able to use something that is dependable, that we could leave town. Right now, we don't feel comfortable, we don't have a vehicle that we could necessarily leave town to use without taking away from a public works truck or. And if council would like to consider this, and I don't know if Deb has anything else to add, we have what vehicles we currently have and what we owe. If you want to go over. I don't know if I should give it to you. I would go with you. No, I have it. We currently just, we have five vehicles. Currently, we have a 2010 Dodge that would be replaced if we move forward. That is paid in full. We also have a 2011 Dodge Charger that we have through a leasing, and that will be paid in full in 2017. So we have two more years, two more budget. We also have a 2013 Dodge Charger, and that will be paid in full in 2016. And then we have one 2014 Dodge Charger that we purchased this year, which was a replacement of the 2008 Crown Vic.
Land to the Explorer, is that going?
The Explorer was the USDA, I said Charger. 2013 is the Ford Explorer. So we have 2010, 11, and 13, 14 Charger, and one 2013 Ford Explorer. And to give you a comparison on the interest rates, the last two USDA loans that we have currently, or dealing to that we have currently, is 3.375 and 3.125%. And one of those was actually, we were able to make it three-year term, and this one is five-year term. We're not able, there's no room for the terms. But we can pay it off with no prepaid one. And if we'd like to consider to move forward and bring this back next month with the resolution, and then any other information, we can provide at that time, if I are to, any other questions.
Okay, the next item is, does anyone have any questions?
Bring them back next month.
I mean, if, if you have, I mean, I just want to make sure for you.
The next action item, Eastern Shore Virginia Public Service Authority. And this should be a quickie. We need two representatives to serve on the county PSA board. And town manager and I were just going over just different ideas, different names, and I have spoken to one, who has spoken to another. And if anyone disagrees, since I can't make recommendations, I wouldn't mind if somebody would recommend Joe Natali and Frank Wendell. That being said, they both have different views on the PSA, and I think the two of them together would be a very good team.
It's Frank.
It is very good.
I talked to Frank today.
It's Frank's property in the.
It is.
It is.
It is. And I want to clarify to you, this is the PSA committee.
Yeah, it's not the board.
It's a committee.
It's a committee.
This is a subcommittee.
It's a subcommittee. This will be fine. It can only, so then you would follow.
Frank, conflict of interest, I mean, the whole, I don't, he owns property in the PSA and he's against the PSA. So I don't, that he should be on there. I would suggest.
Joan is very well.
I would say Joan, I think George would be very good.
It's not the one we saw.
You get to know all the big letters.
I know them all, really.
Okay, but you get to see them. You'd be very good.
Thank you. But I have a lot on my plate for next year. I want to get that other job that's coming down the plate.
Steve? You have an interest?
I have an interest, but I really don't think I have the time.
Mike, oops. Chris, Matt? That's you.
Sam Bowe for Tom.
Okay, well, they're not here to ask you, so we might have to postpone. We will have one. Would someone nominate Joe Natali?
I'm not going to nominate Joe Natali.
Can I second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So move, we have one.
Let me ask Frank if he can get a, an opinion as to whether.
I asked you for an opinion before, he never got one.
Well, we'll ask him again.
Ask him again.
If he has agreed to do this, I think it's easy enough to ask the opinion.
And if he is back, that will ask Sam Bowe or Mr. Baldwin.
And if the opinion comes back okay, but Frank goes in.
Okay. Is that good? Good, Dan? Virginia's retirement system resolution.
We have a reappointment.
We have a reappointment.
Well, we have a Cape Charles representative PSA, sorry.
This is the board.
Yeah, this is the board, yes.
We currently have representation on the Virginia PSA board, which is an advisory board in North Hampton County, consisting of five members appointed by the Board of Supervisors and one member appointed by, from the Incorporated Towns of Cape Charles, Chair and Ex-Officer. Each member serves a four-year term. When the PSA was created and the town of Cape Charles was a member, or is a member, in 2010, the town council appointed Bob Panic to the town council to serve as a representation on the PSA, and his term expires June 30th, 2014. And the recommendation is, if deemed appropriate, reappoint and/or discuss and consider the appointment.
I'll make a motion, appoint.
Is Mr. Panic willing to continue serving?
Yes, he wants to.
I'll make a motion for Mr. Panic to reappoint.
I second the motion.
Have we asked anybody else if they'd like to serve? Do we want to do that?
Do you want to serve?
There's a lot of citizens in town.
Do you want to serve?
There's a lot of citizens in town that may have an interest.
Do you have a town? Okay.
Got a motion on the floor now.
I know, I'm just listening.
Maybe some of the citizens will just turn on the subject.
Excuse me? Like what council?
We would want, we.
The White Council?
We thought that best, yeah.
I don't think it would be out of order at all to hold off on that and see if anyone else is interested in it, because the board does not have to be a member of council or an employee of the town, or whatever. It can be anyone.
All right.
I don't see anything inappropriate in holding on and not voting on this at this time, table, advertising it as, to see if anyone else would be interested in sitting on the board.
We need to vote on the motion.
We're going to vote on a motion.
I'm not supporting my motion.
No, we're not.
No, we're going to vote on it.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of Mr. Panic?
Aye.
Aye.
Two ayes, all opposed, and would like to wait. Two. Oh, shoot. This is the first time, oh my God.
Long time.
With all due respect, Mr. Panic, and I will tell you why, he's got the history, he's got, he's got, he's got, someone would have to come on board to go to the meetings who does all the work down. Mr. Panic, it is, thank you very much.
And your record remains intact down there.
Four?
You've never broken a tie since I've known you, that you agree with me.
Ten years.
Not one time in ten years, even before I was on campus.
Okay. Well, let's move on. Virginia Retirement System.
Every year, the Virginia Retirement System does an annual report based on your local government body and your staff evaluation of how you are supporting the fund for the retirement for employees. And this year, we just received recently in May, the report, and we're funding currently in the upcoming budget, well, no, we were, we have modified, so it does reflect our recommendation tonight. But we, last year, current year, was 8.79%. Every two years, every two years, they evaluate, I said every year earlier, but it's every two years, they evaluate your rate. Typically, they send you, after the evaluation, they send you, this is what your rate will be. This year, as other things that the state, state is doing, kind of before they understand what they're doing and planning for, have given us the opportunity through the resolution to fund at a higher rate than we need to fully fund the retirement plan. And the certified rate, as you see in the resolution, is 5.17%. So by, by funding at this percent, we are fully funding our contribution to the Virginia Retirement System for our employees. They're giving an ultimate rate of 7.15% as an ultimate. Within two years, the report will be done again. We may, it may go up, it may go down. As I said, this year and the previous year, we have been funding at 8.79%. So it's significantly dropped to a new certified rate of 5.17%. And my recommendation is to, to fund it at 5.17% for two years, for funding what we're obligated to fund. And if it goes up in two years, we'll evaluate as we have.
I'll make a motion that we go for the rate of 5.17%. Second.
This is a resolution that you have to roll call.
For cars.
Yeah, the Resolution 20140522B, Employee, Employer Contribution Age for County, Cities, Towns, School Divisions, and Other Political Subdivisions in accordance with the 2014 Appropriations Act, Act Item. Roll call vote, please.
Dunne, yes.
Bannon, yes. Sullivan, yes.
Michelle, yes.
So move.
Can I confirm that we're doing the certified rate? Yes, thank you.
US Army Corps of Engineers, also an action item.
Before the power goes off.
All right, so the brief background, the last time the Army Corps dredged the Cape Charles Harbor was in 1909. Since that time, all permits that they have have expired, so they're currently in the process of redoing the permits to do the upcoming dredging project. Because of their difficulty in finding appropriate spoil sites for the material, the project has been delayed a little bit from their original schedule. Their latest schedule is they're, they're hoping to have the permits approved by November 2014. Construction to start in January 2015, and construction to be completed in April 2015. The concern with that is any additional unforeseen delays could push the construction into the tourist season. So they are requesting us to submit a letter to them, basically saying that we would like our beach to be the first disposal or spoil site, and that if the project is delayed, that half of the beach will remain open at any given time, though it don't cut into the tourist season too much with it. As you see in the, in the report there, the project estimates it'll place 93,600 cubic yards of material on the beach. A net loss of 20% is assumed replacing materials, so about 78,000 cubic yards of new sand will be on the beach, and these are from their calculations.
How much sand did you just get permissioned?
Six.
6,000?
And based off an estimated cost of $12, $15 per cubic yards, plus the site work, it's between $936,000 and $1.17 million value that would be just getting placed on the beach by the Army Corps. And Holly Carpenter, who's the project manager for it, she's out of town and she was unable to attend tonight, but she will, she's planning on being here at the next meeting to answer in detailed questions.
She's going to give a presentation or answer questions.
So for tonight, we are asking the council recommends the staff to submit a letter to the Army Corps requesting the town beach site be completed first, and then in the event of delay. event of delays, that half the beach will remain open at any given time.
I'd like to, I'd like to, that's the motion of what Bob just said.
They have a motion, second.
And she got, they don't anticipate, obviously, having any delays, but just to be safe, they want to, they'd like to submit our letter with permits.
That's it.
More, man.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
We did.
All, here are no objections, so moved by unanimous consent. The next item is mayor council comments.
Did I quote unanimously?
Yes, it was, it wasn't a roll call vote. Any objections?
We didn't have a chance to talk.
I know, I'm trying to finish the meeting. Mayor Council comments from me, very middle, congratulations to all those that ran for office and received any votes in their votes. That's all I have to say. Congratulations.
I'd like to thank everybody that voted for me, you're here, thank you. Also, when I moved down here, they, they pumped sand from the harbor and went up to the pound pole, it's just off the beach, and one year later, it's back about the size it is right now. It's all the same title.
I would like to thank everyone who voted for me also. It's truly appreciative, and I will do my best to continue to represent you in the best way I can.
Oh, Mr. Bennett?
No.
Cool. Announcements, October 26, 26, town officers who closed the observation, or observance of Memorial Day, remember what Memorial Day is? They have a lovely ceremony, the American Legion does it every year, it grows every year, 11 o'clock on Monday, and then followed by the Cape Charles Forum and Library Bead Education. And then the 31st is the MS Bike Tour, that's by the bay. June 5th, town council work session. The 12th is to the budget public hearing, and the 19th is our last council meeting.
Your last council meeting.
Our, I'm talking for us, our last. How do you end that?
And June 14th and 15th is the scholarship to Cape Charles.
On the website. Need a motion to...
Wait, what?
Just one thing, I just want to make sure that council did get their invitation to the dedication ceremony. It's going to be a great day at the library, and I just want to make sure everybody got their invitation, RSVP or...
I did an RSVP. I missed that. I'm going to be there. I need a motion to adjourn this meeting, so moved.
Second.
Any objections? So moved by unanimous consent.